Okay, good evening, everyone. Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to open our Board of Trustees' special meeting tonight at a special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Freedonia duly called and held on the 13th day of October 2021 in the second-floor trustee room in Freedonia, New York. And public notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given to the news media and conspicuously posted in one or more designated public locations in accordance with Section 104 of the Open Meetings Law. So I call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. We'll roll call the trustees. Trustee Linden.
Present.
Trustee Brettz.
Here.
Trustee Bashaw.
Here.
Trustee Johnston.
Here.
Before we move on to the pledge allegiance, just a couple of ground rules for tonight. We will be adhering to the meeting procedures regarding the time for speaking, and I will ask that if somebody is disorderly or disruptive that I will ask you to leave the meeting. So with no further ado, we'd like to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes, please.
Whereas notice of this meeting was given to the Board of Trustees and the news media as required by law, now therefore be it resolved that a special meeting of this Board of Trustees be held at this time and place to consider any business that may come before the Board.
Second.
Been a motion in a second. Trustee Linden.
Aye.
Trustee Brettz.
Yes.
Trustee Bashaw.
Yes.
Trustee Johnston.
Yes.
Carried. Public hearing portion. I can read it. This being the time and place for the public hearing for Village of Freedonia to hear all interested parties and citizens regarding the adoption of three separate laws as follows: Proposed Local Law Number Two of 2021 entitled "A Local Law to Opt Out of Licensing and Establishing Retail Cannabis Dispensaries and On-Site Cannabis Consumption Establishments Within Its Boundaries That Would Otherwise Be Allowed Under the Cannabis Law Article Second law, the adoption of Proposed Local Law Number Three of 2021 entitled "A Local Law Clarifying the Duties of the Trustees of the Village of Freedonia" under Article Two, Section 14 of the Charter of the Village of Freedonia. And the third local law would be the adoption of Proposed Local Law Number Four of 2021 entitled "A Local Law Establishing the Village Advisory Team" under Article Two, Section 23 of the Charter of the Village of Freedonia. Said hearing may be adjourned from time to time as necessary. We'll move on to our public portion.
This portion of the meeting is for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak, once recognized, shall stand at the microphone and state their name and address. Speakers will be allowed three minutes if speaking for themselves or five minutes if speaking on behalf of a group. I will ask the speakers to refrain from remarks that are in poor taste, slanderous, or not germane to any action taken or contemplated by the Board.
Okay, before we move on, I'd just like some procedural here. The public portion, I'll start off with the first proposed law, Local Number Two, and we'll receive all public comments for that, and then we'll move on to the Local Law Number Three and then Number Four in that order. So is there anyone that would like to address the?
May I just make a statement before we start?
Sure.
I just wanted to make sure that the public realized that we are very interested in your input, and I wanted everybody to realize that there are several different ways in which you can communicate with us, and I'm not sure that we all realize that. But besides coming here to the Board meeting, which you're always welcome to but limited to three minutes, we would encourage you to disseminate information, and I know some of you do that, some written information so that we can read it. If you don't get through what you need to get through, you can email us, you can call us, and maybe most importantly, you can submit correspondence to the clerk, which is not only disseminated to us all prior to the meeting, but it's read in its entirety at the meeting. So if you feel limited, we still have ways in which you can get this information to us, and we just wanted to share that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, so correspondence, I guess, is not limited to three minutes.
Right.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to address the Board on Proposed Local Law Number Two entitled "Local Law to Opt Out of Licensing and Establishing Retail Cannabis Dispensaries and On-Site Cannabis Consumption Establishments Within Its Boundaries That Would Otherwise Be Allowed Under Cannabis Law Article Four"? If anybody, please step to the microphone.
Hello, my name is Marsha Johnson, and I live on Cushing Street in Freedonia. I am here to advocate that Freedonia allows the licensing and establishment of cannabis dispensaries in our village. It is not in the interest of our community to opt out of this business opportunity. To begin, many local communities have already opted out, making the likelihood of success for our community more likely, and if these businesses are not successful, it will not hurt our village. It will be the businesses who want to open them that are taking the gamble. We are the beneficiary of their attempt. Many have asked how much revenue this could bring into our community. This obviously cannot be ascertained at this time, but the success of recreational marijuana in other states showcases that it could be very helpful to our budget. California earned $1 billion in tax revenues in 2020, although the tax rate there is much higher than that of New York's. Colorado, which has a population a third of New York's, took in $387 million in 2020, and their tax rate is similar to New York, around 18%. No matter the amount we get from this, it would definitely be more than we are getting now. Allowing for the legal sale of cannabis could also make our community safer because there would be less sales of illegal substances. The important thing to remember is that the law allows us to regulate how it is sold in the community. It will not be a free-for-all. The village can make laws regarding how many dispensaries are allowed, where they can be located, what their hours can be, and how the product is displayed. I would like to suggest that we create a task force that includes local government, community, and business members. This task force could look into what other communities have done, what bills they have passed, and the evidence of the outcome to decide what would be the best way forward. Recreational marijuana is legal in 18 states, the District of Columbia, and several territories. I am sure there is a lot of information on the best laws we could enact to keep our community safe and still make revenue. In conclusion, I encourage our trustees to allow dispensaries in our community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board? Whoop, I'm sorry. You'll be next, ma'am.
John Esperson, 95 Forest Place. I would applaud the Board for deciding to opt out at this point. If we opt out at this point, we can opt in at any point here and after. And to answer your question, the excise tax on any product sold is 4%. Of the 4% excise tax, 75% goes to the village. So doing some math, if we had, let's say there were three dispensaries doing $500,000 worth of business, the net to the village would be about $15,000. And I think what we need to do is look at what costs may be affiliated with opting in. Do we need to hire a part-time police officer? Do we need to hire a mental health coordinator? We don't know. You may say that that is not an issue, but we don't know what the issues are. If you look at what happened in Colorado, crime did go up in Colorado when they enacted the law. I'm not saying that we should opt out permanently, but I think we need to take a closer look because we have the option opting in later. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, Catherine Elder, 29 Carroll Ave. I moved here from Massachusetts, which you all know has legal marijuana. The first dispensaries that opened, we had riots. We had people, we had, they were very scattered so there wouldn't be too many, but the problem was was everybody showed up. There were traffic issues. There were issues with people coming out with their joints and lighting them up the minute they walked out the door, which technically is not a crime, it's a violation, so they had to tell them to stop it, but there wasn't much to do. The traffic was horrendous. The parking was horrendous. This village doesn't have the great, greatest parking or traffic flow now, and if you're the only one that has a dispensary within 10 miles, it's going to be tough.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board on this?
I would.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to talk to the Board. My name is Susan Parker. I live at 82 Newton Street, and I'm here this evening to encourage the Board of Trustees to ensure the safe and responsible approach to the fact that marijuana is now legal and may be sold and consumed in our community. I came last week, as you know, to talk about it, and I gave you all of the information from the law, so I'm not going to go over it again, although I did bring another copy for everyone. I think that there is a misconception that somehow marijuana is not in our community. What we have right now is illegal marijuana. What we have is an opportunity to have legal, regulated, and safer marijuana. And the other part about that, and as I said last week, there are model ordinances that have been put in place because, in fact, marijuana is a public health issue. But in my mind, if we opt in starting in December, then we are giving ourselves more the time to figure out how to do this right. There will be more resources if we opt in, there will be more answers. The law took 10 years to come to fruition. People say that the law was, you know, doesn't provide enough. Well, the law passed in March, there has been six months, and that's when all the actual details will begin. And as our village trustees have the ability to make good decisions, as Marsha noted, as Marsha Johnson noticed, we can have a task force that will go to work, we can do things like, say, in the model ordinances, it's, the ratio, as I mentioned last week, was 1 to 15,000. So we're not going to have 10 dispensaries. I don't think you guys, even if you opt in, are going to allow like a bunch of dispensaries. And so I think that the smart and safe thing to do is to use the village's power, to use the power of the law to create a safe and better law. And by doing so, we may only make, you know, I mean, Mr. Esperson talked about a particular number, 15,000. I don't know, even if you use $3,000 and you use that towards training for the police, you could even use it towards, you know, drug prevention, the money is the village's decision. It is 3% for the village. I think the forward-looking approach will permit our village to move forward to ensure safe and regulated sales and consumption of marijuana within the village. Otherwise, we're looking at illegal marijuana that's still here and is being sold by people who are willing to sell illegal marijuana.
That's three minutes, Susan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Sue. Yes.
My name is Judy Lutes Woods. I live at 105 Temple Street, Freedonia. I'm coming here, and I don't know if I'm the only one that has been to dispensaries. I've been to all of them in Buffalo. There's only three in Buffalo, so I doubt we'd get three here in Freedonia. I hoped, but they told me that you wouldn't, to take questions from you because I could describe the dispensaries to you. There is security in each one of the dispensaries when you walk in that they, you have to show your card. And I would imagine that once it becomes recreational, it would be like it is for liquor stores here, you have to show your card that you're 21. Very, very secure, safe, informative that they would go over the marijuana with you. My husband was, had stage IV cancer. He used it for four years. On another notion, I know people are talking about the money, I'm talking about the hardship for families. When we were going through this for four years with my husband going in for surgeries, for chemo, and then we had to drive an hour, over an hour, to get his medical marijuana because he didn't want to take the opioids. And as we all know, opioids are addictive. Marijuana is not. I, what this woman said in Massachusetts, "It's not in Buffalo." I can tell you, even in the dispensary that is in downtown Buffalo, there was nobody outside smoking. This is pot. I'm telling you that there isn't anyone running outside and hurry up and lighting a joint up for pot, especially if it's legal and that they, they're going to go home and smoke it or do whatever they want to. There isn't any of that. Even in the downtown, which is the Botanist, is the one I went to downtown, and even in the alleyway where we had to park, there wasn't people doing drugs there. No one was doing drugs. The other places I've gone to, and as I said, that I wish and I really encourage the trustees to please contact me because I think that most of the people here have no idea what a dispensary is and how it operates. It is so secure. I had to have a card to even go in with my husband. Now, we're talking about medical, but I'm thinking that the recreational would be very, very similar. In fact, I'd encourage the state to do that or us to do it similar. It was a very professional setting where they went over, they, you told them what you wanted, and then you got it. Marijuana shouldn't be, we now know as adults that marijuana isn't this bad drug that we thought it was for kids. I still discourage any child to do, just like I wouldn't let kids drink alcohol. I mean, if you look at it the same, anyway, has anyone else been to dispensary? Can I ask if any of the trustees have been? No, the trustees that are voting on it.
I have been in other states.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's really worthwhile. We brought in the legal women voters a couple of years ago. I brought in the, we brought in the manager of one of the dispensaries, and he came and he gave a presentation on medical marijuana.
Judy, that's three minutes. I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, well, I encourage you to ask me questions because if even Dawn is the only one of you that's going to be voting on this, that's ever been to one, please ask me questions or I'll take you on a field trip.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I just give a quick reply?
No, this isn't a reply. This isn't a question-answer. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Hi, I brought handouts. My name is Jessica Cowan, and I've lived on 32 Rizley Street for the last 20 years. What a fabulous opportunity to participate in local government, and I thank you for having me this evening. I fully recognize the Board and the town and the community's interest in looking at a new business opportunity. If you would please allow me just to kind of point out three aspects that maybe we haven't considered at this moment in time yet. Fortunately, we are not the first community to wrestle with the decision of what to do about a dispensary or consumption site. We have states like Colorado that legalized marijuana in 2012, giving us a full decade almost worth of data that we can look at. Unfortunately, the tax revenue data continues to come up short. In states where marijuana is legal, it accounts for less than 1% of state revenue. I have that on the handouts for you folks there. I've enclosed a copy for each of you. In the state of Colorado, for every dollar that's brought in by marijuana use, another $4.50 is required to combat the negative effects of marijuana use. My second concern would be the high levels of THC in today's marijuana. In the 1990s, THC is the part of marijuana that makes people feel high, in case anyone doesn't know. In the 1990s, THC was about 4%. However, in today's marijuana, the THC can be as high as 80%, especially in dabs and waxes for vape pens. In addition, there are many consumables or edibles such as Stony Patch Kids and Stony Skittles that are marketed directly to young people. These products are listed and marketed as copycat products. If you can go ahead and take a look at the, well, the picture that I have here, you can take a look at that. The usage directions for these products is for a person to consume 1/8 of a gummy bear, wait 20 minutes, and see if you need more for the desired impact. While I'm not interested in Sour Patch Kids gummy or otherwise, I can assure you that I have never, I've never consumed 1/8 of a chocolate bar, a pizza pie, or pretty much any other food in my life. I would also ask you to consider the marketing impact on SUNY Freedonia. For seven years, I was Assistant Director of Admissions at SUNY Freedonia, responsible for planning and coordinating their open house events. Perception is reality, especially for families looking for a second home for their precious children. While I recognize students may spend money at this new local business, I would struggle to think that it would be $23,000 a year for four years that these parents would be investing in sending their children to SUNY Freedonia. In closing, I would just respectfully ask that our village consider to opt out, at least for the short term, until we can have guidance and legislation in place so that we know what we're opting in for. I would be happy to serve on any task committee or force that would ensure any aspects of this decision are completely weighed and measured. Well, in closing, I wish I could tell you that I have no experience with THC or students' involvement with THC. That's not true. As a local school counselor, we have already sent a child in an ambulance from our school this very year. These issues are big and they're serious, and everyone has valid points. Thank you for the opportunity to share mine this evening.
Thank you. Is there one, yep, go ahead, sir.
So I'm also long, lifelong Freedonia resident. Freedonia's not an island. Just because you don't have a dispensary in Freedonia does not mean people are not going to be able to get marijuana in Freedonia. If Dunkirk hops in, if Brockton, if Casadega, or any of the surrounding communities, and I don't know if any of you have looked at the proposed bill, but it allows for delivery. So most people aren't going to be going to the dispensary. They're going to be sitting at home, ordering it, having it delivered to their house. All this is doing, this decision's already been made by the state. We could talk morality all day, but that's not really what this debate about. This debate, to me, is about the ability for local business owners to get involved in a new and emerging industry. We need businesses in Freedonia. We need jobs in Freedonia. We need tax revenue in Freedonia. All we'll do by opting out is allowing that money, allowing those jobs, allowing those businesses to go to our surrounding communities. I think it's a waste of resources, even if we wait a year, that gives everybody from outside our community a full year head start on us. So what's going to happen is you're going to have somebody trying to open a new business in Freedonia, and you're going to have somebody coming in from outside of town if you decide to open up the doors for this. They're going to have a year's worth of experience, they're going to have all the resources they need while someone in town is trying to start fresh. I think it puts the local business at a disadvantage if they're trying to get involved in this early on. It's not going to keep the product out of the college or out of the village. It's something that's going to be easily accessible wherever you go. This isn't the 1800s. People aren't riding horses. You get in your car, I mean, most of us do our shopping at Tops and Walmart. How much further is it going to be to drive to Dunkirk and get marijuana? I think all we're doing is taking money and jobs and businesses out of our village. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board on this subject? Yes, go ahead, sir.
Greg Kraus, 26 Lakeview Avenue. Agreed with many of the points. First, I think that we do need to look at any possible way to grow our tax base. In part of the numbers that have been talked, and we haven't talked about the sales tax revenue that is also on top of the marijuana-only tax. Again, any opportunity to grow, we should be looking at. But also, this is an opportunity for us to regulate safety. We've talked about the concerns that are had. Those concerns are shared, I think, by both sides of this debate. And the public health concerns and how to address them would be a big part of the task force that we've discussed or that's been discussed today that should include village officials and educators and prevention professionals and business people and citizens, all that can find the best and most protective means of implementing the law. We've heard a couple of things. The village can regulate the THC limits that are allowed to be offered through dispensaries. So there are ways to regulate as well. I think it's been said, but I agree, that by opting out, we're not preventing people from bringing and consuming cannabis in the village limits. It won't prevent the deliveries, it won't prevent the use. So far, we've seen our friends in the town of Pomfret, the town of Dunkirk, the city of Dunkirk, none of them have appeared to decide to opt out. Obviously, that puts us right in the middle of where those other dispensaries and that potential business could be. You know, once again, opting, effectively not opting out, which is opting in, allows the permit, you know, us to have a safe and regulated cannabis product that is then dispensed to adults and may also assist in removing some of the unsafe and unregulated products that are offered. There is a state board in place to regulate the dispensaries. There's local ordinances and zoning that can be approved, and the village certainly will have a say in that approval process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board on this? Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board on this issue? Yes, sir, come on up.
Hi, I'm Bill Moran. I'm at town of Pomfret, Bear Lake Road. My mailbox is in Freedonia, so I'm pleased about that. I'm happy to be here to see government in action, I suppose, and I'm pleased to see that the people can speak here, no matter what they feel they have to speak about. I'm a little concerned about the devil weed and the reefer madness and these myths that we have to put behind us of so many years that have been ingrained in the society. Cannabis is here. It's been here 50 years or more. I can tell you from experience. I spent a night in a jail, Dunkirk, 1973. My wife and I, Honorable Judge August Jankowski, blind, asked me who my father was and how much land he owned before he passed judgment. I was looking at a Class D felony under the tough Rockefeller laws. Can thank Mr. Nixon for some of that on a federal level. So I did get myself expunged, but I've suffered a lot over the course of time. Fortunately, my employer kept me on. But people, you have to realize cannabis is here, it's been here, it's not going away. In fact, we're welcoming it in, just as so many other businesses and states are doing. How many liquor stores you have in town? How many bars? Let people have their smoke if that's what they desire. And as this gentleman said earlier, people go home, they're going to go out of town. I don't think you're going to find dispensaries. Like Judy said, there's only three of them in Buffalo, I know. And by the way, they do deliver now, all the way from Amherst. So this is acceptable now, folks. You better get on the bandwagon and the business people, this is a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there one else that would like to address the Board? Is there one else that would like to address the Board? Is anyone else that would like to address the Board on this? Okay, we'll close that part of the public portion for that law. We'll move on to the adoption of Proposed Local Law Number Three of 2021 entitled "A Local Law Clarifying the Duties of the Trustees of the Village of Freedonia" under Article Two, Section 14 of the Charter of the Village of Freedonia. Is there anyone that would like to address the Board on this local law? Is there anyone that would like to address the Board on this local law? Is there anyone that would like to address the Board on this local law, Number Three? Okay, seeing as though there is no one to address the Board on that, we'll move on to the third local law for this evening, the adoption of Proposal, Proposed Local Law Number Four of 2021 entitled "A Local Law Establishing the Village Advisory Team" under Article Two, Section 23 of the Charter of the Village of Freedonia. Is there anyone that would like to address the Board on Local Law Number Four? Is there anyone that would like to address the Board on Local Law Number Four? Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm trying to understand about your, I'm sure.
Hold on one second. Please be quiet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Board, for allowing me to address you, and also thank Anne Marie for seeing to it that the proposed local laws were published in full in the Observer. That gives people adequate notice if they take the time to read, but thank you for putting that in. There's much wrong with Proposed Local Law Number Four, and I ask that the Proposed Local Law not be adopted or at least tabled for the reasons which I will outline. One, the proposed advisory team, more correctly, of an advisory board consists of the village clerk, village treasurer, personnel specialists. This local law requires the advisory board, among other duties, to assist in overseeing the charter and the laws of the village, coordinate the activities of the various village departments, and conduct a continuous study of all village functions and activities and make reports and recommendations. This proposed local law will seriously interfere with the important and normal daily functions of the advisory board members unless these additional duties are performed over time. The village clerk, village treasurer, and personnel specialists who make up this board are presently very busy.
are presently very busy with their existing charter duties, which are primary, full-time, and must come first. Two, there's a real potential to create conflicts and tensions between the advisory board, village employees, department head trustees, and among the advisory board team members themselves, who must agree by a majority vote on all matters. The department heads have experience and are licensed and qualified under civil service rules and regulations to supervise their departments and make recommendations to the village board. The advisory team does not have the knowledge of the operation of the various departments or any significant experience in working with them. Three, the advisory board may very well want and deserve extra compensation for the significant additional tasks required by this proposed local law. This compensation could be significant. Four, since the advisory board is established by local law and it can only be amended by a local law, this means that if a duty of the advisory board is to be eliminated or changed, or even one word of the proposed local law changed, an amendment to the local law would be required necessitating another local law, a public legal notice, a public hearing, and a filing with the Department of State. Five, since the proposed advisory board will be forming a governmental function under the law, it will be subject to the Open Meetings Law and all the procedure requirements of the Open Meetings Law. The present procedure to address any village issues is efficient and formal and has worked well in the past, is not subject to the Open Meetings Law unless a trustees' meeting is required. Every year in the month of January, the mayor appoints standing committees consisting of two trustees and assigns them various departments of the village. It's the duty of the standing committees, who are elected officials, to periodically check on their assigned departments and report any important matters or problems and make recommendations to the whole board. In the past, this system has worked very well. To summarize, the proposed advisory board, also known as team, it's really a board, would constitute another layer of village government, which is not needed in our village, and will likely create problems, not solve them. It would interfere with and significantly reduce the time needed by the members of the advisory board to perform the primary and important daily duties of the village clerk, village treasurer, and personnel specialist. This proposed local law is problematic and not in the best interest of the village. It should be rejected, or at least tabled for further study. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on Local Law Number Four?
Hi, I'm Michelle Twitchell, I'm on Temple Street, Fredonia. And I don't believe these local laws should be changed. We have an election coming up in three weeks, and I'd like to have whoever wins that election make this decision. And for one, Scott Johnson was not elected by the officials. He was not put up into an election and elected by the village to represent us, and I feel that these laws should be put off until after the election. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on Local Law Number Four?
Good evening, Mark Twitchell, Temple Street, Fredonia. So again, drafted at a meeting where the public wasn't invited by the Board of Trustees and council, a local law fundamentally changing village government in the most profound way is being proposed three weeks before an election, which will see a Board of Trustees obviously different than the group to which I'm privileged to address my opinion. The village needs a mayor. Democracy demands a three-legged stool. We have legislative actions of the Board of Trustees, we have the executive privilege of the office of the mayor, and we have legal counsel. Why, in all of our challenges upcoming, should we cut one leg off of this stool and eliminate the office of mayor from contributing the knowledge, experience, motivation, and authority that this present charter allows? It would be a grievous mistake. It would be simply a, the optics, again, aren't good. It appears to be a power grab by a group of the Board of Trustees, unprecedented in village history, as far as I know. Again, without a mayor and executive authority, there can be no legitimate action by the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees cannot propose the local laws and enforce them by themselves. That's the job of the mayor. That's why we have three different branches of government. So again, we truly need to reconsider this. I would advise this board to table this proposal at this point and allow the electorate to decide how we want to proceed with this very fundamental question. Obviously, not a new question, one that has, you know, dogged this village forever. What is the role of the mayor relative to the role of the Board of Trustees? And it's like any ship, without a captain, it's going to flounder, and that's where I see this village headed if we adopt this local law. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on the Proposed Local Law Number Four? Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? If not, we'll close that part of this. Being, seeing that there's no other public to address the board, I will close the public portion of this public hearing. I would like to advise the board, you've heard for and against each of these three local laws, and I would just ask you to take that in consideration with your vote of what you've heard tonight. Okay, well, correspondence, please.
Correspondence dated October 6, 2021 was received from the Secretary of the Fredonia Volunteer Fire Department, requesting the names of Chad Agel and Craig Carpenter to be added to the active role.
Be resolved that Chad Agel, 5857, Farrell Road, Stockton, New York, is hereby added to the active role of the Fire Police Company, effective immediately. And be it further resolved that Craig Carpenter of 61 Gardner Street, Fredonia, New York, is hereby added to the Fenner Hose Company, effective immediately.
I will second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Trustee Linden?
Aye.
Trustee Brits?
Yes.
Trustee Bashaw?
Yes.
Trustee Johnston?
Yes.
Correspondence stated October 6, 2021 was received from the Secretary of the Fredonia Volunteer Fire Department, requesting the name Perry Mitchell be removed from the active role.
Be resolved that Perry Mitchell of 376 Water Street, Fredonia, New York, is hereby removed from the Fire Police Company, effective immediately.
I'll second that resolution.
There's been a motion and a second. Trustee Linden?
Aye.
Trustee Brits?
Yes.
Trustee Bashaw?
Yes.
Trustee Johnston?
Yes.
Okay, carried, thank you. We'll move on to resolutions.
Be it resolved that Phil Maslock Jr. of Fredonia is hereby temporarily appointed to the position of police chief, effective immediately, at the hourly rate of $45.11, with benefits provided in the village benefit policy provided by department heads.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Trustee Linden?
Nay.
Trustee Brits?
Yes.
Trustee Bashaw?
Yes.
Trustee Johnston?
Yes.
It carries by a three-to-one vote.
Okay, I'd like to table this next resolution in order to allow additional time for further research. I'll second that.
There's been a motion to table and a second. Trustee Linden? Trustee Brits?
Yes.
Trustee Bashaw?
Yes.
Trustee Johnston?
Yes.
Carried, there's been a motion to table Local Law Number Two.
Local Law Number Three, please.
Whereas Proposed Local Law Number Three of 2021, amending the charter of the Village of Fredonia, has been prepared, submitted to the Village Board of Trustees to consider the adoption. And whereas Proposed Local Law Number Three of 2021 would clarify the duties of the trustees of the Village of Fredonia is enacted. A local law clarifying the duties of the trustees of the Village of Fredonia, under Article Two, Section 14 of the Charter of the Village of Fredonia. And whereas pursuant to Section 20 of the Municipal Home Rule Law of the State of New York, a public hearing was duly held on Wednesday, October 13, 2021, and all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak in support of or in opposed of to said proposed local law, or any part thereof. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Fredonia, after due deliberation, finds it in the best interest of the village to adopt said local law. Now, therefore, be it resolved the Village of Fredonia hereby adopts said local law as Local Law Number Two of 2021, entitled "Local Law Clarifying the Duties of Trustee of the Village of Fredonia," under Article Two, Section 14 of the Charter of the Village of Fredonia. And be it...
Local Law Number Three, Michael, is that type of...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Last paragraph.
I'll read that again. Now, therefore, be it resolved the Village of Fredonia hereby adopts said local law as Local Law Number Three of 2021, entitled "The Local Law Clarifying the Duties of the Trustees of the Village of Fredonia," under Article Two, Section 14 of the Charter of the Village of Fredonia. And be it further resolved that the Village of Fredonia clerk is hereby directed to enter said local law in the minutes of the meeting and in local law book of the Village of Fredonia. And it is given due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State by filing the same with the Secretary of State as required by law. Local Law Number Three of 2021. This local law shall be enacted. A local law clarifying the duties of trustees of the Village of Fredonia, under Article Two, Section 14 of the Charter of the Village of Fredonia. Be it enacted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Fredonia as follows. Section One, subsection seven of section 14 of Article Two of the Charter of the Village of Fredonia, originally enacted by Chapter 480 of the Laws of 1894, and is amended by Local Law Number 9-2016, is hereby amended and to read as follows. Yeah. Number seven. To carry into effect every resolution adopted by them, which they shall have authority to adopt, including but not limited to supervising and directing subordinate officers and employees of the village, and retaining contractors and employees of all lawful purposes relating to the operation and administration of the village. Nothing herein contains, shall be deemed, or construed as abolishing, transferring, or curtailing any power of duties of the Board of Trustees or of the mayor, treasurer, clerk, as prescribed by the village charter, village local law, or other applicable laws of the state. Section Two, this local law should take an effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State of New York, as required by law.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Trustee Linden?
Before I vote, I'd like to explain that my vote is that I, as the last paragraph says, it doesn't curtail any duties or the powers of the board, but it's adding powers. It's adding powers to supervise and directing subordinate officers, employee, and employees. The Board of Trustees should not be directing the subordinate employees. For that reason, I vote no.
Okay. Trustee Brits?
Yes.
Trustee Bashaw?
Yes.
Trustee Johnston?
Yes.
The local law passes by a three-to-one vote. Local Law Number Three of 2021, the three-to-one.
Before I read the next one, I'd like to ask our attorney if there was anything that they, any statements that you'd like to make that would help the public understand, or refute any of the things that are misleading and misunderstood, I think, more than anything. Was there anything you'd like to add?
There was a statement with respect to the Open Meetings Law and what this advisory team encompasses and the rules that it would be obligated to follow. I do think it's important that it's my understanding and the direction that I had been given from the board to draft this local law and to create this advisory team, that it was not an intention to create a second board that would in fact make decisions. The previous public hearing that was held, that the Board of Trustees heard from the public and decided to make changes to, really focused on providing assistance and recommendations to the board that ultimately makes the determination. It's my understanding and the way that the board asked me to revise the law to reflect that, in that the advisory team would be advisory only, not actually making determinations or decisions for the board. And that way, I do not see that it is a creation of another board, subject to the Open Meetings Law. This is an advisory team that would then provide recommendations to the board, and I don't believe that their meetings would necessarily have to be noticed because there are not decisions within those meetings. Again, as anticipated in the description that the board has asked me to revise those appropriate descriptions in the local law. I think that is important to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Whereas Proposed Local Law Number Four of 2021, amending the charter of the Village of Fredonia, has been prepared and submitted to the Village Board of Trustees to consider for adoption. And whereas Proposed Local Law Number Four of 2021 would create the village advisory team in its entitled, and is entitled, "A Local Law Establishing the Village Advisory Team," under Article Two, Section 23 of the Charter of the Village of Fredonia. And whereas pursuant to Section 20 of the Municipal Home Rule Law of the State of New York, a public hearing is duly held on Wednesday, October 13, 2021, and all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak in support of or in opposition to said proposed law, of any part thereof. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Fredonia, after due deliberation, finds it in the best interest of the village to adopt this local law. Now, therefore, be it resolved the Village of Fredonia hereby adopts said local law as Local Law Number Four of 2021, entitled "A Local Law Establishing the Village Advisory Team," under Article Two, Section 23 of the Charter of the Village of Fredonia, a copy of which is attached hereto and made a part of, made hereof. And be it further resolved the Village of Fredonia clerk is hereby directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the local law books of the Village of Fredonia, 30 days after the adoption of the law, or immediately upon the affirmation vote of a majority of the qualified electors voting thereon at a general or special election, and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State by filing the same with the Secretary of State as required by law, when the applicable time period has elapsed, to fill a petition or referendum has been conducted approving this local law. Local Law Number Four of 2021. This local law shall be entitled, "A Local Law Establishing the Village Advisory Team," under Article Two, Section 23 of the Village of Fredonia. Be it enacted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Fredonia as follows. Section One. New Section 23, Article Two of the Charter of the Village of Fredonia shall be established to read as follows. Twenty-three. Village Advisory Team. The village advisory team shall be comprised of the appointed positions of the village clerk and the village treasurer, along with the employee position of personnel specialist. The village advisory team shall report to and be under the supervision of the Board of Trustees, subject to the approval, direction, and control of the Board of Trustees in accordance with the Charter Code and all rules and regulations, as may be promulgated to the, sorry, I butchered that word. By the Board of Trustees, the village advisory team shall, number one, assist the Board of Trustees to oversee the Charter Code, rules, regulations, ordinances, local laws, and codes of the village, are administered efficiently and fairly. Two, assist and support the coordination of the activities of all village departments pursuant to the village charter, village code, and policy of the Board of Trustees. Three, at the direction of the Board of Trustees, see that all inquiries by residents of the village or other interested persons are referred to the appropriate village official or department head for investigation or response. Four, attend meetings of the Board of Trustees as directed by the Board. Number five, at the direction of the Board of Trustees, make reports and recommendations to the Board of Trustees regarding the efficiency or economy of the village government and ways to improve the same. Number six, at the direction of the Board of Trustees and under their supervision, conduct a continuing study of all functions and activities of the village for the purpose of devising ways and means of obtaining greater efficiency and economy. Number seven, perform any other duties delegated to the village advisory team by the Board of Trustees. Nothing herein contained shall be deemed or construed as abolishing, transferring, or curtailing any powers and duties of the Board of Trustees or the mayor, treasurer, or clerk, as prescribed by the village charter, village law, or other applicable laws of the state. Section Two. This local law shall take effect 30 days after the adoption of the law, or immediately upon the affirmation vote of a majority of the qualified electors voting thereof at a general or special election.
Second the resolution.
There's been a motion and a second. Trustee Linden?
Please let me explain my vote. The powers of each branch of government are granted by the Constitution. It is my opinion, this law is unconstitutional. And furthermore, just by stating at the very last paragraph that it should be deemed an... that, of course, that no powers would be abolished or transferred or curtailed of the mayor or the board, just by stating that, in my opinion, does not make it true. Let me explain. Board of Trustees is our legislative body, who makes the laws and responsible for appropriation of funds. Our mayor, the executive officer, puts these laws into effect and ensures they are fairly executed. And of course, the judicial part of our government interprets those laws. And what the very first duty on this suggests is that the board has the executive powers and are hiring someone to assist them in that duty. And for that reason, I feel that this is unconstitutional because they're asking the... What it states here is, "Assist the Board of Trustees to oversee the charter, code, rules, regulations, and ordinances of local laws and codes of the village are administered effectively and fairly." Well, that's the, that's the powers of the executive officer, the mayor. We don't have the authority to take those, or remove those powers by the Constitution. For that reason, I say no.
Trustee Brits?
Yes.
Trustee Bashaw?
I want to restate, it is the belief of the majority of this board that this action that we're about to take is a step towards a strategic plan that sets the course for the village, and it sets a course that will survive no matter who's elected, and is the intent of that action. And I vote yes.
Trustee Johnston?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, these are all the things that the administrator used to do. Nobody was complaining about constitutional issues when we had an administrator. The administrator answered to the board the same way that the advisory team will. I just don't understand all the, all you do about this. So, and I vote yes.
Local law number four passes three to one. Just to recap for the public, a local law number two, proposed law local number two, opting out of licensing and establishing retail cannabis dispensaries, was tabled. Local law number three, titled "Local Law Clarifying the Duties of the Trustees of the Village Freedonia," was passed three to one. And the local law number four, "A Local Law Establishing the Village Advisory Team," was also passed three to one. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Anything else for the good of the order? If there's nothing else, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Some move?
A second?
Second.
There's been a motion in a second to adjourn. Trustee Linden?
Aye.
Trustee Brits?
Yes.
Trustee Bashaw?
Yes.
Trustee Johnston?
Yes.
Carried.